Fourteen days. And I want to point out that there is a solid black line on June 30th, denoting that this is when we did data migration from one database to another to improve our case investigation and to be in alignment with the state databases. What's interesting or concerning is the upward trend in the number of total cases. We started out fourteen days previous on June 22nd at 2,446 cases, and we ended on July 6th with 3655. This denotes a 49% increase in our cases in 14 days. The second graph describes our new cases in the past two weeks, city by city. What is noteworthy is the trend for Santa Maria on 622 versus 676. That denotes an 84% increase. The second one is the red line, which denotes the Santa Barbara trend, and that is a 115% increase. So these increases are serious and concerning. I'd like to briefly point out the accessibility of data on our website. This is a snapshot of what's available on our website. We describe on a daily basis the cases, the new cases, by the 10 geographic area, the confirmed cases, the recovered cases, as well as the active cases. And lastly, the number of deaths attributed in each of those geographic areas. This graph describes the hospital census. And as of yesterday, we have 69 patients hospitalized, with 48 being in medical surgical beds and 21 being in the ICU. What I have introduced on this graph is what CDPH looks at when they look at our hospital census. So we might look at this graph and say, well, there's only 69 hospitalized patients due to COVID, so given that we have upwards of 800 beds in our hospital system, we're okay. However, what the state does is that it takes into entirety the other beds that are occupied by elective surgeries, by other critical healthcare needs. So percent of medical surgical beds currently available, it's moderately concerning. It's at 33%. The percent of ICU beds currently available in our system is 49%. The number of ventilators currently available is 84%. The percent of hospital with larger than 14 days of PPE on hand is only at 60%. And I'd like to pause here. When we saw that the 60% availability, we have submitted to the state for an additional set of PPE so that that particular hospital is adequately supplied. And we are working with that particular hospital just to make sure that they have what they need. And again, we have 69 patients in the hospital. So the state looks at our county metrics, and they have three ways to describe our metrics. One is less concerning. That means we're at the green. And when it becomes a warning, it's moderately concerning in the orange. And when it is serious, it is more concerning in the red. And these are the descriptors that CDPH uses to describe our metrics. Our weekly community positivity rate hovers right at 8.3%. And this is a snapshot of our status on the CDPH monitoring status. I'd like to go through the numbers, and then I'd like to talk about what the data means. So as of yesterday, we have been on the monitoring status list for 21 days. We're doing well with the number of testing in our county at 238. However, the elevated disease transmission is at 207. Our testing positivity is at 8.3%. And the increasing hospitalization, we meet the criteria at 9%. The number of ICU beds currently available is at 49%. And the number of ventilators currently available is at 84%. So we look at disease transmission. We look at the average cases per day per 100,000 population, as well as our case rates and test positivity. So the state provides these metrics, and this is how we are monitored through our reopening sectors. So these indicators tell us about the prevalence or burden of a disease within our county and provides us with an indication of the volume of contact tracers needed to begin to box in the disease. The elevated number of cases in our community is directly attributed to the freedom of movement as we reopen sectors, which provided increased opportunities for social interactions and gatherings without physical distancing or face covering. Typically, for each positive case, we can estimate up to 10 contacts. So the average has been anywhere between 5 and 10, which will need to be investigated, traced, and isolated in order to break the disease transmission chain. As of July 6th, we have 398 active cases in our community. Currently, our tracers are actively tracing 315 cases and 53 contacts. And I want to pause and just really acknowledge the incredible work that the disease contact tracing and investigation team has done. They have worked around the clock without holidays and weekends to make sure that we tackle the number of cases when they hit our system. To address the current case rate and positivity, we have initiated the following actions. We have expedited the disease investigation process by assigning tracers to also do case investigation using the state-sponsored Cal Connect platform. We have 68 contact investigator contact tracer trained. It's a new terminology that the state has given us. So Contact Investigator Contact Tracer, CICT. As people transition to their previous job assignments, we are additionally adding additional tracers to continue the work. In addition to that, we have 15 contact investigator contact tracers coming from the state this week and another 15 following next week, for a total of 30 additional contact investigator contact tracers. The expectation by the state is that our team will contact a case within three working days. Because of a current backlog due to delayed receipt of reports via CDPH reporting database, our current average is approximately 2.4 days after a case is received on our contact tracing platform, investigated, and contact tracing is complete. So even with the delay, because of the incredible effort from our contact tracing team, we are still meeting the mark at 2.4 days. On average, one staff can typically complete five cases, including the investigation and all the contact tracing related to that case. We now have enough tracers. We know we have enough tracers when we can beat even the state's expectation and contact our cases within one to two days. So even though we meet the expectation, we hold ourselves to a higher standard, and we hope to improve on that data. There's another reason contact tracing is so important. It gives us an indication of how disease is being spread in our community. From the cases that we have investigated, we see that 57% is related to person-to-person transmission. 1% is related to travel, and 42% is community-acquired. The primary and most important mode of transmission for COVID-19 is through close contact from person to person. Community spread means the spread of an illness for which the source of infection is unknown. The cases are not sure how or where they became infected. So if you add the two percentages, 99% of the cases in our community became infected through coming into contact with a known case or exposed in the community to a case. What this means is that you must assume that everybody you come into contact is infectious and thereby need to take the precaution. This means that you must wear a mask, you must socially distance, you must wash your hands, and you must not touch your face. It means you must be sensitive to your surroundings and make smart, informed choices about where you go and what you do. Reopening of business does not mean that the virus has been defeated. It means that we are working to find a balance in our community until a virus is defeated. Living with a virus established within our community means we must wear a mask and we must socially distance. We have no other defense at this time. If we are to continue to reopen as a county, behavior must change. That behavior change will be seen in our disease transmission metrics and later in our hospitalization rates. Hospitalization rates and capacity. Monitoring change to the number of individuals who are hospitalized for COVID-19 is another way to assess the burden of COVID-19 in our county. If more people are being hospitalized for COVID-19, it is likely that the disease transmission is increasing, although increasing in hospitalization rates are likely to lag by approximately two weeks. Unlike the case rates or testing positivity rate, the number of people hospitalized for COVID-19 is less likely to be influenced by how much testing is occurring. However, the number of patients currently hospitalized for COVID-19 may be influenced by a number of factors, such as age, race and ethnicity, and underlying health conditions. We are in daily communication with our hospitals and community weekly with the hospital CEOs, and we are collaborating with our area hospitals for detailed demographics of COVID-19 hospitalized patients. We anticipate presenting the hospitalization data to your board in several weeks. Lastly, hospital capacity is a critical data point to track because it assesses our local healthcare system to care not only for COVID-19 patients, but also the remainder of our community members with serious unexpected illness or those needing critical surgeries. While the number of hospitalized patients are low, at 69 patients yesterday, taking into account the beds occupied by non-COVID patients, this metric captures the remaining available beds should there be surge of patients needing to be hospitalized. Given the data, I'd like to now walk through what the Public Health Department is doing in partnership with our community partners. We are doing extensive outreach. As I mentioned previously, we are heavily invested in the Latinx and Indigenous migrant COVID-19 Response Task Force. This task force was stood up on March 24th at the beginning of our pandemic with our first meeting, and previous to that with lots of planning. The task force is composed of a steering committee with CAUZ, MYCOP, UCSB, Public Health, El Centro, and our Language Justice Associate. Since then, the task force has formed a mental health working group to address unique needs in the community, as well as the farm worker working group. These two working groups have an outreach and education component to make sure that community members are accessing mental health resources as well as the farm workers accessing resources. Through partnership with the various agencies on the task force, public health videos in indigenous languages were produced and amplified and transmitted by our partners. Community grants have been obtained to support the work. UCSB has a cadre of undergraduate students and graduate students supporting the effort through data gathering and doing demographics and GIS mapping and assessing social determinants of health, in particular in Santa Maria. And District 1 and District 5 staff have sponsored a Public Square Equity Project where there are, I believe, over 10 language capacity among interns to do outreach and education, particularly in Santa Maria. In addition to that, from the get-go, we saw reports from other jurisdictions nationally and state about the disparate numbers in our Black American community and Asian American community affected by COVID-19. We were approached by leaders in both communities about the need for us to also do prevention work, to also address disparities and social determinants of health, and we have begun that work. We have been meeting off and on, and we are planning to identify staff within the department that will liaison with these two communities in addition to continuing the work in our Latinx and Indigenous community. In addition to that, we have started meeting with ag sectors, including the growers and the farm worker advocacy group. We have had, I believe, two meetings, and I am joined in these meetings by our ag commissioner Cathy Fisher. Even though the state has offered us community testing, it is restricted to three fixed locations. So in addition to those three fixed locations, we have partnered with community healthcare providers and community-based organizations to provide focused weekend testing in Guadalupe and Cuyama. And we hope that these two efforts can guide and inform us for future testing sites throughout the county. So along with outreach, we need to talk about education and enforcement. We have issued health officer orders, and there has been a worry that who is able to enforce health officer orders? And Health and Safety Code 101029 provides broad authority for the sheriff and every peace officer of every political division of the county, meaning cities, to enforce local health officer orders concerning COVID-19. So this gives us the bandwidth to be able to join in partnership to make sure that our health officer orders for sectors, as well as the state health officer order for face covering and social distance occurs. In addition to that, we have our environmental health services activities, which means that our environmental health services team has been out not only providing guidance, education for jurisdictions, for businesses that we typically have jurisdictional authority over, but we've done it for all of the sectors. But in our normal course of business, we do go out to the restaurants, to the bars, and to other places employment and provide that education, and then progressively hold the places of business accountable to adhering to the social distancing and the face covering so that these sectors, these places can offer a safe workplace to their employees as well as to the public. And I am happy to report that Kelly and her team has been very strong in communication and partnership with the cities for their code enforcement activities. So that ends my update this week.
Thank you, Dr. Duranessa. Are there questions for Dr. Duranessa? Supervisor Williams?
Well, I appreciate the fleshed-out information on the contact tracing, and I think that's enormously important, as you indicate. Is it possible for you to sort of subdivide that information? And are we asking questions of the community transmissions, like have you been to any of the following in the last, you know, week or to whatever doctors feel is the highest likelihood incubation period? So that we might be able to have some better idea where our trouble spots might be? I guess my concern is that without, and I'm really happy that the department is moving towards targeting the populations that are getting sick the most, but the public dialogue really, in my view, could shift our emphasis away from where we're getting the most infections and to something else, right? And so I would want us to be able to, as much as possible, let the public know where we think most infections are and why, based on that contact tracing. So if it's possible to, you know, subdivide the successful traces, and even the ones, the traces that lead to community transmission, you know, have some stats on, you know, have they been to a restaurant in the last week? Maybe even the level of detail. Have you been to a restaurant outside in the last week? Have you been in a restaurant inside in the last week? Been to a bar? Have you been to the beach? You know, because I think otherwise, the public is, they're very alarmed right now, understandably so, because particularly how large of increases other areas are experiencing, and then because we are also experiencing an increase. And I want us to remain focused on where our trouble spots are. And so I think data helps guide us where our trouble spots are, but also helps the public know where their emphasis should be as well. Is that possible?
So for our contact tracing, we, along with 34 other counties, are using the state platform. So that state platform is pretty rigid in terms of having very specific questions that all the tracers have to go through. But, you know, I'm also interested in finding out about the impact of different sectors. So I'll bring it back to the team and see what creative solution we can come up with.
Appreciate that. And then I wanted to ask you, if you've been able to read this letter from CAUZ, you know, some of these issues are ones that we've talked about before. But given, you know, the high incidence of transmission among farm workers, some of these seem like pretty reasonable things if we have the power to mandate them.
Right. So I read the letter after it was sent to your board, and I've had several conversations with Hazel Davos. And I think that what we can commit to, which is explore the H2A housing. She has offered a webinar to our staff so that we can be more familiar with the program and the living constraints. I believe it's scheduled for Thursday. The high positivity rates among farm workers is concerning, and it is seen throughout, I think, our state and other parts of the country. And so Public Health is interested in partnering with the community, as well as with the ag sector, to see what can we do to change the environment? What can we do in terms of changing the policies so that farm workers can thrive?
Given the sweeping powers that the public health officer has, I mean, would you not be able to require agricultural employees to notify workers in Spanish and indigenous languages about taking sick leave if they're entitled to, and to if infected, and arrange for more frequent testing and screening of workers, particularly before an H2A project is occupied? That's within your ability?
Yes, and I believe that that is currently being done by the growers. But that's something that definitely we can explore with county council to make sure that our health officer can issue orders. And I'm not sure, even though the growers, I know that the growers have measures in place to control the disease and to make sure that the farm workers have pathways. I'm not sure whose jurisdictional authority to enforce it. But that's something that definitely we can explore with our county council to see. Is it the ag commissioner? Is it Cal OSHA? Or is it Public Health? And what is the extent that Public Health can do?
Well, I would encourage you, even if it's duplicative of state law in this case, to do so because at this point, you know, it's not like Cal OSHA has enough bodies to really enforce it very well. And this is obviously a trouble spot for us and may be more worth the time of some people in your department than, you know, a vector that is not creating as many cases as this is. So, you know, and even if most employers are doing it, you know, I think what we've dealt with before, you and I, about this is uniformity in the industry, right? That, you know, responsible employers are already doing this, but there may be some folks who aren't, right? And so I think that's maybe my concern and why I would encourage you and the health officer to, even if it is duplicative of state law, consider this because you, at least at this point in time, I'm not sure, absent of a public health crisis, but at this time, we have a better ability to enforce than the state does.
Supervisor Hartman?
I just wanted to mention that the dense housing situations are of concern. We've, of course, dealt with it, the jail, the prison, juvenile center, nursing homes. But for farm workers, dormitories, students, what are the best practices? And what can we do to ensure that we have the best practices being adopted by landlords and others? So it goes across the board, and I think there are some legal questions and policy questions. So I'm hoping we can work on that one.
Is there any questions from Santa Maria?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'd like to add then about outreach is that I appreciate all the things that you're doing, and these are really important, and they're delivering results. But it's getting to me, in my mind, it has come to the point where we should consider contracting with trusted messenger organizations to do additional contracting with trusted messenger organizations to do additional outreach. There's only so many people that you have available to do this work and to organize these groups. And I think that, um, you know, engaging them formally in, in some fashion to have them, have the financial assistance to, to do additional outreach is a good idea at this point. You know, we're, as Supervisor Williams mentioned, we have particular challenges in particular communities of communicating, um, the vulnerabilities of individual populations to the virus. And these are always challenging, uh, it's a challenging area to get the word out and, and relying on trusted messengers and community organizations that already have those relationships, particularly in a crisis when we don't have the time, you know, to develop the expertise ourselves is really an asset that I think we should explore much more intensely. So I'd hope, I'd hope that you can consider that. Um, if that's it, thank you, Dr. Derenosa. Appreciate your report. Ms. Anderson?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, we're here to brief you on RISE business activity that has occurred since our last meeting with you for your board and the public. And it'll take just a minute for her to pop that up. So over the past week, there's been quite a few changes indicated from the state that we've had to incorporate into our county. Indoor operations were closed for dine-in restaurants, wineries, tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, zoos and museums and card rooms. All operations were closed unless serving food as a meal within transaction for brew pubs, breweries, bars, pubs and lounges. Additionally, the state added recreational team sports to their not permitted list. Uh, that was previously not, uh, listed on any category. Uh, the public health order changed that supported the indoor and closure of the bar sectors where it was the county health order 2020 12.3 and that was issued July 2nd. We did want to clarify some amended guidance specifically for the beverage industry. Our beverage industry includes wineries and tasting rooms, brew pubs, breweries, bars and lounges. There is a distinction however. For wineries and tasting rooms, uh, it is closed to indoor operations. Outdoor operations and pickup are still permitted, but they are not required to serve food with their transactions. Brew pubs, breweries, bars and lounges are different. They are closed to both indoor and outdoor operations unless they are operating with serving meal as a transaction, um, very similar and consistent with dine-in restaurant guidelines. Uh, they are being allowed to have temporary emergency food permits from the environmental health department, uh, similar to what wineries and tasting rooms were allowed several weeks ago. Uh, so they can contact, um, the EHS department. We do have this on the website, uh, the application in order for them to do this. So where are we at now? We are still under stage three, but we're modifying it, uh, weekly now. Can't quite see it, but everything in red is indicate of, uh, additional guidance from the state. Uh, so this is just, uh, indicating that we do have a change in dine-in restaurants under stage two and we are now, uh, bifurcating essentially the stage three and stage four Just a reminder to your board and the public, we do have a living document with the RISE guide and that is changed, uh, one to two times a week, depending on what, uh, activity is going on at the state level. We are, um, on our website allowing for businesses to continue to self-certify depending on when their sector is open. Uh, additionally, for example, the bar sector who may have to now, uh, self-certify under a dine-in restaurant criteria. Businesses are required to review the state and local guidance, complete the prevention plan and self-certify that they can open safely. So our numbers now are about 3,533 for the county, countywide, uh, predominantly in the city areas and we do have some in our incorporated. Um, the largest sectors are continuing to be dine-in restaurants, retail and office workspaces countywide. Our RISE ambassadors continue to be out in our community and are assisting now the, um, some of the city teams, uh, in order to get trained and provide that, um, training and education out to our businesses and it's been very popular, uh, throughout the community. We also have our small business community partnership enhancement program. Uh, this is, uh, your board approved, uh, two ways for, um, businesses to expand out into, to their, um, surrounding area, uh, one through public rights ways and other through private property. We have had some interest, especially now that, um, a lot of dine-in restaurants and other facilities are closed to indoor, um, facility. So moving outside makes sense for some of them. Uh, in regard to the private property and parking lots, we know that some have taken advantage of that. However, they aren't required to notify the planning department for about 30 days. So we know that those will be coming in soon. All of this information and information for the businesses are available on our recovery SBC.org website. It's continually updated and we try, try to provide the most current information that we can in order to keep businesses apprised of what the changing issues are. Uh, here's some of the contact information. Our, um, environmental health, uh, team that has led and really answering a lot of questions in our gray area, uh, at EHSadmin@sbcphd.org, um, very responsive and have been phenomenal in responding to, um, our business questions. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Anderson? I had a question just about, um, no, go ahead Supervisor Lavigno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I appreciate all the things, you know, that great report. Uh, just a question that I've been getting from, from different business owners up here is, um, you know, are we looking at other type of permit relief? Anything that, um, and, and I know we've done, you know, as far as expanding into public, uh, private right, uh, public, um, right of way, but, you know, just overall, um, even as low as, you know, talking about, you know, replacing people's water heaters that, you know, we have a fee on top of, I'm just kind of, as the county as a whole, looking at just all types of fee relief reductions, you know, as we go through a time when people are really struggling. And I don't know if that's really under your purview, Nancy, or if it's something we've got to discuss on a broader level as the board, but, um, there's just a lot of business folks out there that are, you know, struggling to keep their doors open and it'd be nice to have a plan of attack of how we, um, how we can, while still, you know, maintaining our integrity of, um, supporting the taxpayer, but we've also got to look at ways that we can help out in this situation.
Yeah, Supervisor Lavigno through the chair, um, great, um, comments about that. So we can certainly look and see what some of the, um, other counties and jurisdictions are doing. Um, we have so far been fairly consistent with our cities, um, but that's a great idea. We can certainly look into that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Lavigno. Um, I had a question just to highlight, there was a lot of confusion at the end of last week with the beverage industries and the state guidance. And I think it wasn't clear to the public that the state changed its guidance multiple times in very short period of time. And if you could just explain that and kind of put a, a highlight on the, the complexity of what we're dealing with and how quickly the state is issuing guidance, changing that guidance, you know, and expecting us to be able to turn around that, um, instantly to accommodate the, the needs of local businesses. I'd appreciate that help.
Chair Hart, I think if Dr. Derenosa could respond to that there, she's in constant contact with CDPH and she can give you a flavor of what that was like.
Yes, so, um, there was a lot of confusion because it went from a Sunday night call, um, on the list of expectations from the state to when the actual guidance, um, the first guidance was set to the guidance that was sent to us confirming the change on Thursday night at 10:00 PM. And so we quickly, so the previous guidance said all bars.
And even that word guidance, I think is confusing because it isn't guidance. It's mandate from the state. And so all of these words add to the confusion of the public. The state, the governor goes on television and has a press conference at noon on Thursday and says words that are easy to understand, bars and, and restaurants will be closed.
Right.
Then later that day, you actually get the mandate that comes from the state Department of Public Health that, that turns those words that are English into legal words that are more precise. And go ahead with the rest of the story.
Yes, so, so that legal letter said that all bars, brew pubs, operations, both indoors and outdoor operations must cease. So in writing the health officer order, we looked at what was previously issued that made the allowance, but, you know, if food dine-in, food options are done, then they can open, but with the latest, it had, did not have that pathway. So, um, county council and public health, um, debated that issue and we finally said, the state said, "All operations indoors and outdoors must cease." Um, and so we issued the, uh, health officer order and, um, ABC had reached out to industry leaders and said, "No, I think we'll change, we'll make that allowance still happen." But CDPH did not communicate that to us until Thursday night at 10 o'clock. Um, I know because it was one of those rare nights that I went to bed early and I woke up and I'm like, "Oh my gosh, something came out while I was asleep." And so we quickly pivoted, um, environmental health and working with Nancy and we thought, "What is the most reasonable way that we can accommodate?" And given that ABC, CDPH had made that allowance, that pathway, we issued a letter to our, uh, beverage industry leaders and engaged Nancy in that, um, messaging as well, as well as our, um, JIC in doing that. And so we were able to reach, um, to our community and made that allowance. And yesterday, we cleaned up and made amended our health officer order to capture the late changing, um, uh, mandate from CDPH.
Well, thank you for that. I think, I think that does not get communicated clearly to the public about how, um, how difficult this is to respond to the, the guide, not the guidance, the mandates from the state and how, in this instance, there was no advance warning, there wasn't consultations from the California Department of Public Health that these things were going to happen. Absolutely understandable, given, you know, how dynamic the nature of this pandemic is and, you know, the governor's looking at a lot of different inputs around the state and all of those folks are, you know, understandably concerned, there's different circumstances in different states, but, or different parts of the state. But, um, you know, it's, I'm sure people who are not involved in government think that this is all seamless and it's easy and that the, you know, the state mandates are clearly communicated to local governments that are easily executed. That is not the case. This is extraordinarily not that system. And, and I think that that's important to communicate to the public, that we're doing the best we can in rapidly changing, conflicting advice from different state agencies, not even advice. I, I fall in that same trap too. Conflicting mandates from different state agencies on the same subject at the same time that have to be resolved. And all the counties are facing the same thing and all of the county public health officers are communicating to the Department of Public Health about these challenges.
And I think what made this, uh, situation difficult was that it came on the eve of a holiday weekend. And so the staff, um, on Friday had it off. So, but they, our environmental health services staff were amazing. Um, they came back and did the work and transmitted the change, um, that morning.
Good, well, thank you for that. Supervisor Williams and then Supervisor Hartman?
I was just gonna say that I think that's the, um, so important for people to understand that, um, uh, this is extraordinarily ad hoc, if I could sum up. You, you put it so much more in a fun way and I love you more every day for it, uh, but, but it's like, it's very ad hoc. It's like we, we get this, um, and people think we might get it in writing before it's on a press conference, but we don't.
Yeah, well said, thank you. Supervisor Hartman?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just wanted you to add, uh, if we don't comply with the guidance mandates, then there are serious consequences to our county. Um, and you can elaborate on that, but I, I just wanted to say, uh, I don't think we can say enough, but we're hearing such wonderful things about our public health department and our, our RISE program. Um, the, the ongoing nature of this makes it really, really hard and you keep stepping up, your staff keeps stepping up and people really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, there are significant, Mr. Ghazani, I think you were poised and ready to, to talk about what the state, um, has as, as an enforcement tool.
Well, I think that really goes into two categories. Hard to say which is most important, but from the business perspective, if the county does not go through its own local health order process, the state public health officer puts out her own order, which is actually much less agile in reopening. Uh, so it's another thing that has to change before we can reopen. And that's been the experience of some other counties around the state when they didn't move quickly enough with local health officer orders to adapt to a changing mandate from the state. The state issued its own mandates that then need to be undone before you can then further loosen when the conditions improve. So I think that the approach that Santa Barbara County is taking, although, uh, more labor intensive is actually, um, provides quicker results on the ground for reopening, that's probably the, one of the, the two factors. The second is that the CARES Act, which is the federal statute, as implemented through the, uh, California Budget Act, has some, uh, pretty strict language in there about following these, these state directives, whether called guidance or mandates, and that there is the ability for the state to remove funding for the county, uh, based on that. And that, that comes out about the budget act and also some of the health and safety code statutes.
Yeah, and that, that draws a great, um, makes, makes a great point. In last week, we had the two orders, we had the closing the restaurants indoors and again, the state was going to do that and they were going to issue their, their order. And by acting quicker here locally and having a local public health order, that can conceivably be lifted sooner than the state guidance would, depending on our local circumstances. As it's turning out, you know, it's probably not likely to happen, but it gives us a tool and that's an important part, part of this, to be responsive to local needs. And also the, similarly, the same thing with the bars and restaurants. Had we had let the state adopt a statewide order, we wouldn't have had the flexibility to make the adjustments that you were able to make over the weekend, over the last three days. You know, another, another point that I think is really important macro point is the situation with testing locally. And, um, I don't think it has been clearly communicated how difficult it has become to get results back from the state's testing process. You know, they're, they have made, have set a system which makes perfect sense. We want to have testing, we want to be able to have, um, community surveillance of our circumstances and be able to have accurate information and communicate to that, to the state and, and have that information for you to do planning, to do outreach to the right, um, neighborhoods. But our system now, at this point, has gotten so delayed, the state's system, not our system, but the state's system, um, that the labs that the state is funding and operating are backed up now to the point where I think it's a week to get results back. Is that right?
Right, anywhere from five to eight days.
Yeah, and that, I don't think that has been communicated clearly to the public either. This is the state of California operating these testing facilities in our county in cooperation with the department, your department, you know, trying to help facilitate that, make that happen. But this is a, you know, turnkey operation that comes from the state and, you know, that is making it extraordinarily challenging in the contract tracing, um, efforts because you're getting results back, you know, too late to be effective. And that, that is something that is not the county's responsibility. It's not a function of, um, us taking the responsibility to communicate to the public that we need more testing done. We want our community to be tested. We want people to have an opportunity to get tested. That is independent of the state, that is our community's need and expectation. And in, in working in partnership with the state, we expected that they would be able to fulfill their part of this equation and that hasn't happened. And I think it's important to say that out loud for people to understand, you know, where we are. And, and there's a lot of reasons for that. It's not, you know, that they're arbitrarily not helping us, it's because tests have become limited again. You know, we're in that situation. We've got a global pandemic, we have outbreaks, states all around the country. The system of providing tests is getting wobbly again and it's not Santa Barbara County, it's the state of California and the United States and, and other places. And that, that has not been communicated clearly. So I want to make sure that folks understand where that responsibility lies and where the solution to that lies. Um, you know, and it's, and it's fundamentally a problem of our public health system in the United States that relies on private companies to do things that other countries don't do through the private sector, that, that rely on businesses that operate under their own, um, economic demands to operating these testing facilities. And we are at their, um, we are responsible to them because they are determining what resources that they have. that they have, how they're being used. And even simple things like, you know, we've been doing this now as a country for three months. The equipment necessary to maintain these tests and have the tests happen is breaking down because it was never imagined to be operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week for three months. That is never, that was not how these machines were designed to operate. They can't operate like that and, you know, we don't have a national strategy to address that problem and to make that work seamlessly for every community. So I just wanted to take this opportunity because these things have been out there in the public discourse and I don't think we have put a laser beam on them like we should, so.
Right.
There wasn't even questioning any of that, that was a rant.
I had an opportunity, Senator Hannah Beth Jackson called and she was also worried about the length of time that it was taking for our community members to receive their results. I was able to share with her and, and diagram out each part of the, the process and what it took and the length of time that it took. And she took down the notes and she said that she would advocate on our behalf. But I think the other, the other part of the lengthy delay in testing that, that is not widely known is that, so we get data dumps from the state test results. And so, but yet we also have an expectation from the state that we need to complete the contact tracing within three days of receiving notice. And so we could get on a Monday, 500 cases dumped from the previous week. And our amazing team will work and we will galvanize and pull people that who have been trained to do the work and they'll do it around the clock until we can get it down to a manageable size. So the testing delay, the data dump, and still be able to do the contact tracing from beginning to end and close in 2.4 days is an amazing feat.
Yes, it is. And it's also-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Adam.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in regarding your rant, critical of companies, private companies' efforts to, to do the testing and all the other things that they do. You know, except for all the other systems, ours is the worst. And you know, we, we have a, a system that's, that's not designed to, to manage pandemics, really. I mean, under normal circumstances, it's a, it's a hell of a system. It isn't perfect, but no system actually is. And, and I think that we've, we've had more medical innovations invented in the United States because it wasn't under government control than any other country. And we've probably made quite a lot more in modes in, in drug development and, and all kinds of other things. But I, I think that to think that if the government were in charge of all this stuff, that it would be better is, is naive at best.
Supervisor Williams.
Well, that's not what I got out of Chair Hart's rant. I, 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 and even to call it a rant, I think devalues the, the importance of the frustration because it is just a, what, and, and I'm inspired to chime in, in that I don't want all of this complication and this frustration and the, the sometimes daily press conference cycle, not your daily press conferences, but maybe the state's, or to keep your focus off of the areas of greatest transmission. Or even last week, where public opinion was. You know, we should address the things that the, the public is concerned about, but I don't want it to take away from the department's focus on where we're getting the most transmissions. So if you have data that points clearly in directions for greatest transmissions, I just want to implore us to remain focused on those areas of greatest transmission and not to get sidelined by whatever is happening at the state or even what is happening on Facebook to keep us away from getting the job done or more likely just making us spend more time on what may be the fifth biggest reason and not the first biggest reason that we have a large number of transmissions.
Are there any other questions or comments or anything else? All right, well, I think that concludes this report. Thank you very much for all the information and the clarification and do we have a motion on this item? Excuse me, we have public comment, of course, yes.
Yes, Chair Hart and members of the board, we have five requests to speak on this item and we are going to the phone to begin with Robert Cumming to be followed by Hazel Davalos.
My name is Robert Cumming, I'm a certified advanced rolfer and a certified massage therapist. And I've been living and working in Santa Barbara now for the last 12 years. I run a spa along with a number of other colleagues downtown. And it's just really taken me aback that the public health officer of Santa Barbara has opened up our kind of personal healthcare businesses or any of these businesses involving, involving one-on-one services like tattooing and salons and of course, the spas, that he's opened these back up as of what has been just a few weeks during this national upsurge in COVID-19 cases nationally and locally throughout this whole state of California. You know, the day that he opened it up, I'm having colleagues of mine tell me, well, at the spa, we've had to cancel sessions because clients are calling in telling us they just contracted COVID-19. And so, um, the very day he opens it up, I'm hearing all of this, you know? And, and there's an upsurge of cases. So here we've been in quarantine for like three months and, uh, you know, having the businesses closed and not working, but so it just makes no sense to me that all of a sudden, the public health officer opens up these businesses during an upsurge of cases, while we've been spending three months in quarantine trying to avoid spreading this in, into the community. And I'll just tell you, personal one-on-one healthcare services like this, you're dealing with people that are coming, uh, you know, they're, they're in town here in Santa Barbara, but they're coming from elsewhere, from all over the place. And they come as tourists here in Santa Barbara and they could be bringing in anything. And, and of course, with COVID-19, it's, they could be asymptomatic and they could give it to one of our therapists, therapists could be passing it on to others. It's just not a good situation. And, uh, you know, we've, I've been seeing that the COVID-19 cases have been, have been going up every day. We have clients that are nurses at the local hospitals and they're telling us that they're, they have a lot more people that they're having to deal with. So that's my, my greatest concern is that this is, this has been opened up for these kinds of businesses here in town. Now, I know the governor has shut down the restaurants and indoor businesses again. Yet again, these personal healthcare services are open. I wouldn't want to go and get treated by another massage therapist or any of these kinds of services when I know that they've been seeing all kinds of people from everywhere, coming from any possible locations and possibly contracting this virus. So I just don't think it's a very good thing for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Cumming.
We will now go to Hazel Davalos to be followed by Anna Marie Gott.
My name is Hazel Davalos, Organizing Director with CAZ, based out of Santa Maria. My organization, in partnership with MyCup, sent you a joint statement last week because we fear things could get much worse for farmworkers if the county doesn't act quickly. Specifically, we'd like to see the county supervisors, public health department, and Ag, Agricultural Commission take steps to increase regulation of the ag industry. Ag is the largest employer of essential workers in our county, and if we're going to get serious about stopping workplace transmission of the virus, this is the first place you should look. Last week, there was a major outbreak in Ventura County where 176 out of the 200 H2A farmworkers housed in a rider-owned facility tested positive for COVID-19. This really shouldn't come as a surprise when you have people living in dormitory-style housing, the risk of spread is great. I come today to ask you to heed this warning. Two of the companies housing workers at that facility, Elkorn and Royal Oaks, both have operations in Santa Maria. And Santa Maria is one of the number one destinations for H2A workers in the state. We are literally a ticking time bomb. Please review the proposals outlined in our statement, which include requesting the Board of Supervisors to direct ag commissions to require agricultural employees to notify workers in Spanish and indigenous languages, not only about the sick leave they're entitled to have inspected, but also to arrange for more frequent testing and screening of workers and put an end to retaliation against workers who speak up about the need for more safety protocols. We'd like you to direct public health to increase inspection and enforcement within the ag industry. In particular, we'd like to see the implementation of a bathroom water inspection program, as well as the department setting higher requirements for H2A housing. CAZ has had a positive alliance with the public health department over the last several years. We've been impressed with the Latinx Indigenous Immigrant Task Force they developed in response to COVID, and we are confident that with some direction, the department will do what's best for the community. Finally, we'd also like to ask you as a board to revise your agricultural employee dwellings policy developed a couple of years ago, to state that if a grower wants to house H2A workers in the county unimporated land, that they must provide a COVID safety protocol plan, have a public health officer walk through their facility prior to housing workers, and require that employers test H2A workers upon their arrival to the country. H2A is a federal program and it's, it's hard to find where local government can regulate, but this is certainly one space where you all have already put that into practice and it is an opportunity. Taking these steps right away is crucial. We have approximately 2,000 H2A workers in the city of Santa Maria alone and many companies bring in a new group of workers for the fall harvest. We need you to act now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davalos.
And we will now go to Anna Marie Gott to be followed by Brian Catan.
There's a few things that I would like to point out and just see if maybe the public health officer would be able to address these issues. One is the fact that we are seeing a greater incidence of younger people who actually have COVID. And a lot of it is because of their irresponsible actions and lack of wearing masks. And I would like to know what type of outreach we're actually doing here in the county to try to dissuade young adults from participating in these types of activities. A lot of it has to do with parties and, and, and very large social gatherings. The other is, there's increasing, you know, discussion of COVID being airborne and the lack of ventilation in some office buildings that may actually be helping to transmit the virus. Governor Como in New York actually is not allowing a number of businesses to reopen unless they do something about their air filtration systems and their heating and air conditioning that they, that they actually have for large businesses. I personally, as some of you know, have a family member who has been receiving cancer treatment. The last, the last two times that I, that I, that we've gone to USC, we have been in areas where we have a, a number of, of nurses that have come by and they actually take photos of some invoices that I have on my phone because they are interested in the goggles that, that we are wearing. Because I, I, I bought those goggles for us to go into the building because we have been hearing about the transmission of the disease and the availability, the availability of the disease to actually be, be caught through your, the membranes in your, in your eyes. I find that really startling and I would like to know what the, the public health director, it, it has any, any contingency plans with regards to air filtration or the fact that I've got nurses coming up and taking photographs of the invoices that I've received because they're interested in the goggles that we are wearing inside of a hospital. Are other people actually even talking about this in public health? The next, the next thing is, if the public health officer has so many wide sweeping ability to mandate, to enforce, I wonder if they have actually spoken to the police officers and the police department and actually required the enforcement of social distancing. In the city of Santa Barbara, it's frightening to go down State Street and walk on some of the city blocks because now we have about two feet, maybe in some cases, to be able to socially distance. Social distancing is six feet, however, there are pathways down State Street that are four feet and actually now even smaller because of-
We will now go to Brian Catan to be filed, followed by Terry Strickland.
And thank you to the Supervisors for giving me the opportunity to speak today. The reason I'm calling is regarding the COVID crisis that we're having in California and in Santa Barbara County. The reason that I'm calling is just a couple of concerns that I noted over this last weekend. And I didn't really travel outside of the city of Santa Barbara because I don't really do any nonessential travel if I can avoid it. But a couple of concerns have occurred in the last several weeks and are still occurring in the city of Santa Barbara and I've heard about them elsewhere in the county. Excuse me, the main concern that I've had is that even though it's in the county public health order, and it's a concern that I've seen in the LA Times and in several other states, it's a concern about the raised valve masks that don't allow any filtration on the exhaled air when people exhale through the masks. And it's in the county health order that they aren't allowed. Uh, and it's in the county health order that they aren't allowed. And the LA Times article and several others even mentioned the N95 masks, as does San San Clinic here in Santa Barbara, and also, uh, several other places. And the problem is that all of the signage that I see doesn't mention anything about that. And several of the people that I see going around, as well as several employees in the city of Santa Barbara and other places, uh, as well as the tourists, are still wearing these masks. And it's a great concern to me, uh, because it kind of devalues the whole purpose of wearing the masks when these masks are used. Uh, so that's my main concern. Uh, the only other issue that, uh, concerns me is over this last weekend, in the city of Santa Barbara, I ran into a couple of businesses that weren't following the governor's and county's recent mandate, uh, that, uh, even knowing about it, we're still allowing, uh, in-building dining and, uh, um, drink service. And, uh, even when mentioned about it, uh, they totally ignored, uh, and knew about it, and were doing it anyway. And it doesn't seem to be anyone, I'm not sure who to call or who to notify, especially on a holiday weekend when situations like this occur, uh, because it seems like no one is actually able or willing to, uh, be the ones to enforce or do any actions when violations occur. And, um, I guess I'm just concerned because I don't know who to notify, uh, when violations occur, uh, especially flagrant violations, when they know they're in violation and they do these things anyway. And I thank you for your time, and just wanted to bring these concerns up and hopefully find a way of finding out who to contact, uh, when the violations occur, uh, so that you can be notified, or the city of Santa Barbara can be notified, so that action can be taken, uh, so that we can all be a little bit healthier and safe in the county and the city of Santa Barbara. So thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Catan.
And we will now go to Teri Strickland to be followed by Ronnie Melton, who is our final speaker.
Uh, Teri Strickland, um, so I'm sure you've all heard from your local business community, but, uh, I thought I would weigh in here and just give you one more opinion. Uh, it's difficult to understand these new mandates, and giving, um, small business one or two-day notice to implement these, these things was really unbelievable. But, you know, the business community has, has jumped in and done what they need to do. I mean, dining restaurants were following original guidelines, all the ones I know, all the ones that I went to and friends of mine went to, you know, they removed tables, they're keeping patrons six feet apart, staff and customers are wearing masks, you know, and then all of it gets shut down again. Now these struggling businesses are having to spend thousands of dollars to try and serve customers outdoors, um, which isn't easy in the food business. Uh, you've all seen tents going up in restaurant parking lots, and, uh, that's at a very high cost to businesses with very small margins. Uh, contrary to what Chair Hart, um, mentioned, uh, I don't think it's easy for you and your teams to make these decisions. Obviously, that would be silly to think these decisions you make are easy. Um, but this is what you get paid for. Uh, keep in mind that you all have continued to get paid. Not the case for small businesses and their employees. And you don't have to call your employees, people dependent on the job you supply to them, and tell them once again that they're out of work. Then again, we have no idea how long the governor will keep this in place. Remember, many small businesses will go out, they will go under because they're barely holding on now, and this is all through no fault of their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
And we will now go to Ronnie Melton, who is our final speaker. Chair Heart, members of the board, my apologies, that is Ronnie Mellon, who is on the line.
Hi, um, I have a bunch of questions, and it has to do with the testing, which we don't even know which test is the accurate test. Hi, back again. So my question, it's really a bunch of questions about the testing. Uh, I hear that testing is accurate, it's not accurate, there's all kinds of opinions. Is there one test that has a name or something so that you know that you're getting the test that is the most accurate? And, um, then, even if you do get the test, say you're tested on a Monday, and you test, um, negative, and the next day you're with people who have it and you get it by Wednesday, uh, what, what does the test really tell people? I think it gives them a false positive that, um, that somehow they're okay when, when it, it doesn't last for 24 hours necessarily, and/or you'd have to get tested every two weeks, and/or like they do at the White House, test people every single day in order to know, you know, if there's really a problem. So my question is, is there one test that is the Acme Test, or whatever name it would be given, that, uh, people can recognize that they're getting a test that I, because I know several people, friends of mine, who have gotten tested and later found out that the test was not accurate, that it was a, a test that they were experimenting with or something, I don't know. So that would be something I would just put out there. And, you know, I can see if you go tested, to get tested if you have some symptoms, that they could tell you maybe you have the flu, or maybe you have the COVID-19. But i- if it, if you test negative and you're one of those people who will always test negative, um, what good does it do?
Thank you, Ms. Mellon. That concludes our public comment.
Chair Heart, members of the board, that is correct, that concludes public comment.
CEO Miyamoto.
Um, Supervisor, since there are some questions about where to, um, contact us for potential violations, I just want the public to know, on our recoverySBC.org webpage, recoverySBC.org, there's a section called reopen your business, it's on the left-hand column, reopen your business. If you scroll down there, there is a button you can push that says report a potential violation. That comes to our staff, and then also gets, um, sent off to the correct, um, authorities involved. So it's a orange button, report a violation on recoverySBC.org on the reopen your business section.
And then, um, the point the person, Mr. Catan, I think, made about the N95 masks with vents, that's true, that's a problem. People shouldn't have those masks, shouldn't be using them. I know some people have disabled those vents, but, um, his point that those are not helpful, that those are exhaling, potentially exhaling the virus is absolutely right. That's the simple cloth mask that every one of us keeps around and people in the audience are wearing is our most effective tool. We don't want to be using N95 surgical masks for, um, the general public because there's a shortage of N95 masks for, um, hospital workers and, and healthcare providers. Um, and yes, Ms. Strickland, the notice from the state that we had to close down restaurants was too soon and too quick, and very difficult restaurants to respond to, but that's the reality of the situation that we're facing, and, and that is a extraordinary burden on local businesses and restaurants. Mr. Cummings' concern about the safe operation of personal services businesses is a legitimate concern, and, um, it doesn't sound as though he's going to reopen his business. Others are taking active steps to manage risks and do the best they can. There is no perfect solution that is, um, 100% protective of everybody in the community. The simple things that everybody knows now, I hope by now, and is doing, um, wearing a mask, washing your hands, not touching your face, and, um, staying six feet away from, from everyone, um, is all we can do, and that's the best we can do. And if we all do it really, really well, we're gonna, we're gonna make a difference. And if we don't, we won't. And so it really isn't the systems and the, um, the regulations, it's individual personal responsibility and behavior that is going to determine what happens with us. Supervisor Williams.
Well, Mr. Chair, you, you have the highest retention skills of the information of public comment. That, that was awesome, that you were able to respond to all except for you missed one, which was the testing question. So I just wanted to ask that of our public health staff. I think the que- the, um, the member of the public was maybe referring to serology testing, but could we, uh, just explain what tests are better than others? Our concerns with serology testing, uh, and, and maybe their accuracy and their, their ability to give, or their, the danger of giving people a false sense of confidence?
Yes, um, I wasn't sure whether she was referring to the serology test or the PCR. So...
Maybe I should just, uh, break it down.
Right.
Is there any hierarchy in the accuracy of the different PCR tests? And...
No.
What is your opinion of the serology tests? And explain what that is.
Sure. So the PCR test is where, what, um, we are doing, it is the gold standard for the test whether a person has, um, the virus in their body at that point in time. So she is correct in saying that if you test, um, PCR at our community, um, testing site, and if it turns out that you are negative, you are negative only for that point in time. Sure, the next day, when you are exposed to a positive person, you may very well have been exposed, and the next time you test, that could be positive or negative. So it is really a point-in-time testing, and it does, um, uh, it does offer some, a false sense of security. It doesn't mean that you will never get it, it just means that that moment in time you are, you don't have the virus in your body. The serology test is a test that indicates whether you have had the disease, so it shows up as antibiotics. And so for the most part, those are accurate, but we are not using serology testing, um, for diagnostic purposes.
And just maybe you could explain why we're not using it?
So, um, for treatment purposes, what you want to do is, does this person have the current, have the virus in their body? So that is the gold standard by which CDC and CDPH has issued for our healthcare system, that in order to treat a person, to make that diagnosis, whether they are infected, you use a PCR.
And then, uh, the, I guess the ancillary question she asked was, um, why then we don't test, uh, every week or every day? And the reason is because we want folks who are at greater, greatest risk...
Right.
...to test more often, not everyone because they're, the backlog in tests...
Correct.
...are so, and testing is so large.
Right, absolutely. We want to make sure that our essential workers in the hospitals, in the clinics, um, our first responders, people who have a greater exposure risk are the ones who are getting tested.
And then, uh, one last question that came in in a letter that you could answer later if you, you can't answer now, but just the question is, how many of our cases in our hospitals are out-of-county patients?
We're getting that information. Um, there was, um, at a previous, um, press conference, the reporter asked if we were inundated with, um, people from Mexico who had been transported here, and the answer is no.
No.
Um, for the whole duration, we've had four, and those have all been discharged.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Dornosa. Supervisor Hartman?
Since we're talking about testing, I just wanted to ask if we're pursuing, uh, what seems to be happening elsewhere, where they're collecting samples from multiple people, testing once, seeing if there's a positive, and then only doing individual tests if there is a positive. So if you have congregate living or something else, you, everybody can come in the morning, give a sample, and you test once. If you have a positive, then you can further test. It's a way to, uh, given we don't have enough tests, it's, it's a way that's being developed to, to not have to test everybody every day, um, and I just wondered if we're exploring that.
So, um, that is what I believe we are doing in a congregate setting. Um, when we have a positive, we isolate that positive, and then we continue testing until, we, but we do test everyone until there are no longer, um, positives. Um, in a, for surveillance in a skilled nursing facility, I believe what you're describing is what the protocol is for a skilled nursing facility. I'm more than happy to bring back our testing protocol in skilled nursing facilities, um, if you'd like.
Well, only because it may be relevant in dormitories or farmworker housing and other things.
Right. So earlier you mentioned what are the best practices for safeguarding, um, uh, members of congregate living spaces, so that could be something that I will present next Tuesday.
Thank you, Dr. Dornosa. Any additional questions or comments? All right, well, again, this concludes this item. Um, is there a motion?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, roll call, please.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Lavenino?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll take...